Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn. I'm the City Council President. Viewers can watch the City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. I'd also like to ask everybody to be respectful and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you might be escorted out. Please also note that according to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum, please? Counselor Arroyo.
President.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Bock.
Here.
Counselor Braden.
Here.
Counselor Coletta.
Here.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Lara.
Here.
Counselor Liu Zhen.
Here.
Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy.
Here.
And Counselor Worell.
Here.
I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Again, I would like to remind everybody to please silence your cellphones. And I would like to ask everyone, as another reminder, to be respectful of the body and the important work that we do here today. This week's clergy is Reverend Will Dickerson from Greater Love Tabernacle.
William.
William. From Greater Love Tabernacle, invited by City Councilor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, would you like to come up to the podium to introduce our clergy for today?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Bishop William Dickerson. So, welcome, everyone, today to our council meeting. I have invited Bishop William E. Dickerson II. He was born in Virginia and raised in Boston, Massachusetts. He is a graduate of Boston Latin School, and after completing high school, he graduated from Bible School. And after obtaining an undergraduate degree in business, Bishop Dickerson earned a master's degree in education from Cambridge College, a master's degree in urban ministry from Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary, and now holds an honorary doctorate. Bishop Dickerson has been pastoring for 27 years, and he is the founding pastor of Greater Love Tabernacle, which he founded with his wife of 36 years, Luella, in 1989. And when I have met her, do we call her the fabulous Miss D? Is that what people... Lady D, yes, his beautiful wife, Lady D, and his son, who I do know, Will, who used to work in Counselor Flaherty's office, I think he then went to the police department and is now upstairs in the community engagement office. Bishop Dickerson is also the founder and president of Restoration Ministries, Inc., and the president of Greater Love Community Cares, Inc. Over his 27 years of pastoring, he has assisted in the establishment of other churches and ministries. And for years, Bishop Dickerson has taught and counseled troubled youth and adults. He has spoken frequently in schools, jails, and prisons, and he is also a former adjunct college professor and a Boston Public School teacher. Bishop Dickerson has done quite a lot in his career, and now serves as an overseer for other pastors and ministry leaders. He is a role model in many communities and a beacon of faith here in the city of Boston. So, without further ado, it is my honor to welcome Bishop William E. Dickerson II to our council meeting today to open us in prayer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn, President Flynn, and Counselor Aaron Murphy. Thank you for your invitation. And I guess that bio is old. I've been pasting for 33 years now.
Oh, sorry.
Well, glad to see you all here, and also I acknowledge the New Democracy Coalition that's here, Reverend Peterson, who I've known for years. Let's bow our heads in prayer. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together. We ask that your choices, blessings, be upon this session. And we pray, dear God, that you would touch, Lord, our city. I pray that the peace of God will prevail throughout this session and throughout our city. I pray that you would cause, Lord, councilors, to work together. Let there be unity. Let there be, Lord, a sense of togetherness in regards to social justice, in regards to, Lord, economic justice, in regards to, Lord, racial equity. Father, I pray that you would bless this council, that it might go in the direction that might uplift this city and cause this city to be a city on a hill, to be a city that is an example to others. I pray that you would, Lord, cause unity to prevail, cause peace to prevail. Father, I pray that you will look upon this city and rebuke the violence and the bloodshed and all the inequities, Lord, that face our city from time to time. I pray, dear God, that you would, Lord, help us to sit down at a table, Lord, of brotherhood, that we can discuss, Lord, the things that will enhance this city. I pray, dear God, that you would, Lord, cause the peace of God to prevail. Give us what to do and how to do it. And I pray that everything be done decently and in order. And I pray in respects to all faith traditions. In Jesus' name, thank God, amen.
Amen.
At this time, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Bishop William Dickerson. And to your wonderful family as well. We have great, great respect for you. Now, we're on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes seen and hearing, no discussion on this matter. The chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The meeting, the minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from Huron and the mayor. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0920?
Docket number 0920, message in order for your approval in order amending City of Boston Code ordinances 5, Section 5-5.10 regarding salary categories for certain offices and City of Boston Code ordinances, Chapter 2, Section 2-8.1, salary of city councilors, and Section 2-7.11, salary of the mayor, filed in the office of the city clerk on August 8, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Docket 0920 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0921?
Docket number 0921, message in order for your review, the surveillance use policies for each city department or agency subject to the ordinance on surveillance, oversight, and information sharing, Boston City Code, Section 16-63, filed in the office of the city clerk on August 8, 2022.
Thank you. Docket 0921 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0922 and 0925 together, please.
Docket number 0922, message in order for the supplemental appropriation order for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year '23 in the amount of $1,510,820 to cover the fiscal year '23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and Transdev and its bus drivers on the city's transportation contract with the vendor, Transdev. The terms of the contract are July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2% in the second and third year of the contract, increases to the report rate, and other reforms, filed in the office of the city clerk on August 8, 2022. Docket number 0923, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year '23 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $1,510,820 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for the fiscal year '23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and Transdev and its bus drivers on the city's transportation contract with the vendor, Transdev. Docket number 0924, message in order for the supplemental appropriation order for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year '23 in the amount of $13,767 to cover the fiscal year '23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the Teamsters Local 25. The terms of the contracts are July 1, 2020 through June 20, 2023. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, and 2% to be given in October of each fiscal year of the contract terms, filed in the office of the city clerk on August 8, 2022. And docket number 0925, message in order for your approval in order to reduce fiscal year '23 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $13,767 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year '23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and Teamsters Local 25.
Thank you. Docket 0922 through 0925 will be referred to the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0926, please?
Docket number 0926, message in order authorizing the city of Boston, acting through its mayor's office of housing, to apply for, accept, and expend $16,527,831 provided under Section 231 of the Federal Fiscal Year 2020 Appropriations Act for the Continuum of Care Program from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. These funds will be used to support programs that provide services and housing to the unsheltered homeless.
Thank you. Docket 0926 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0927, please?
Docket number 0927, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the grant from the Boston Planning and Development Agency in the amount of $6,785,000 for the costs related to the pedestrian improvement projects on Canal Street and Thoreau Path, the bike lane connecting projects between Causeway Street and Commercial Street, and the planning, design, and/or reconstruction of the Northern Avenue Bridge.
Thank you. Docket 0927 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, Transportation. Docket 0928 has been withdrawn. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0929?
Docket number 0929, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $4 million in the form of a grant for the fiscal year '23 Public Safety Answering Point Support and Incentive Grant, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund costs associated with providing enhanced 911 services.
Thank you. Docket 0929 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0930?
Docket number 0930, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant from the Planning and Development Agency in the amount of $2,562,297 for the costs related to transportation improvement projects.
Thank you. Docket 0930 will refer to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0931?
Docket number 0931, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2,299,117.68 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year '23 State Elder Lunch Program, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Eighth Strong Commission. The grant will fund nutrition services for older adults in the city of Boston at the rate of $7.39 per meal for up to 311,112 meals.
Thank you. Docket 0931 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Docket 0932 has been withdrawn. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0933?
Docket number 0933, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $413,890 in the form of a grant for fiscal year '23 State 911 Training Grant, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund the training and certification of enhanced 911 telecommunications staff.
Thank you. Docket 0933 will refer to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0934?
Docket number 0934, message in order authorizing an appropriation order in the amount of $686,800 for the Cemetery Division of the Parks and Recreation Department and the Trust Office of the Treasury Department to be funded from the Cemetery Trust Fund established under Chapter 13 of the Acts of 1961.
Thank you. Docket 0934 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0935 through 0937?
Docket number 0935, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $167,000 in the form of a grant for fiscal year '23 Crisis Intervention Team Training and Technical Assistance Center, awarded by the Mass Department of Mental Health, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund the implementation and staffing of CITTTAC through Boston Police Street Outreach Unit and Academy. Docket number 0936, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $106,575 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year '23 DMH Co-Response Grant, awarded by the Mass Department of Mental Health, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund the full recovery coach, forensic peer specialist, to assist BPD officers with hub meetings citywide. And docket number 0937, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant from the fiscal year '23 DMH Training Grant, awarded by the Mass Department of Mental Health, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund overtime costs to backfill crisis intervention team training and other mental health training for officers.
Thank you. Docket 0935 through 0937 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0938?
Docket number 0938, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $39,155 in the form of a grant for the Recording Risk Grant, awarded by the Council on Library and Information Resources, to be administered by the office of the city clerk. The grant will fund the Preserving Boston's Voices Project, digitizing the Boston 200 Community Oral History Collection.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Bock, Chair of the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Counselor Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. On behalf of the committee, I'm seeking a suspension and passage of this docket today. It's obviously less than $40,000, but I wanted to inform the council about what it's really for. So, this project, it was described in the brief description as preserving Boston's voices, digitizing the Boston 200 Community Oral History Collection. But the details on that is actually that the city archives, they want to provide digital and public access to these community oral history recordings, which were created by the Boston Bicentennial Commission between 1974 and 1976, in which period the commission recorded oral histories with a wide cross-section of Boston's residents, including members of Boston's Black and immigrant communities. Due to their age and over a decade of storage and poor environmental conditions, these tapes are at serious risk of degradation and cannot currently be accessed. Transcripts and partial transcripts exist for approximately half of the recordings and show the interview content includes immigration, the African-American experience in Boston, Boston's social movements, urban renewal, and a wide variety of local history topics. This project will preserve the recordings through digital reformatting, produce descriptive metadata for the recordings, and make the recordings available to the public in the Boston City Archives Digital Access Portal. So, I think it's a really important, vital project. It's also exciting because it's the type of thing that we'd like to do 50 years on today, doing a bunch of oral interviews with Bostonians in the coming years. So, it's a nice model for us. I've had the chance to read a few of the transcripts from these, and they're just like so full of detail of kind of Bostonians' perspective on their lives back in the 70s. And I just want to commend our archival staff have done an exceptional job applying for grants. They really hold a really precious treasure trove together, a little bit too much with duct tape and chewing gum, and I'm hoping that a design process that we're currently in is going to give them some better facilities overall. But in the meantime, they've secured this obviously relatively small grant, and we wouldn't want to lose any of those tapes. And so, I hope that the council can support this motion for suspension and passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bock. The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0938. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0938 has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0939?
Docket number 0939, message in order for your approval in order to fully authorize the creation of a sheltered market program during the pilot, which ended on June 2022. We learned that this is a powerful and necessary tool to advance our administration's mission to foster equity in city contracting. Following the success of the sheltered market program, it's critically important to our larger efforts to ensure that Boston is an economically equitable city that offers opportunities for all communities to build wealth. To that end, I request that the council reauthorize this sheltered market program for an additional three years.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. As Chair of Government Operations, I am seeking suspension of Rule 33 so this matter can be adopted. This order was sponsored by Mayor Michelle Wu and first introduced to this body on December 1, 2021, and passed unanimously on December 15, 2021. This order authorized the creation of a sheltered market program as a pilot tool with the purpose of advancing equity in city contracting pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30B, Section 18. A sheltered market program allows the city to designate certain contracts for procurement from one or more classes of disadvantaged vendors. The purpose of a sheltered market program is to create an environment that allows for small, local, and diverse businesses to build their capacity to compete on contracting opportunities. This pilot program was conducted as a close partnership between the administration and finance and economic opportunity inclusion cabinets. Within a short timeframe, the city was able to award more than $700,000 in contracts under the pilot program. Due to the success of the pilot program and as Chair of the Government Operations Committee, I recommend that we take this up today and suspend and pass. Thank you, Council President Flynn.
Thank you. Counselor Arroyo seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0939. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0940 to 0949 together, please.
Docket number 0940, notice was received from the mayor of her absence from the city on Saturday, July 16, 2022, at 7:35 p.m. until Wednesday, July 20, 2022, at 5:05 p.m. Docket number 0941, notice was received from Counselor Mejia of her absence from the August 10, 2022 meeting. Docket number 0942, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Alex Lawrence as a member of the Boston Compensation Advisory Board for a term expiring June 30, 2027. Docket number 0943, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Priscilla Flynn Banks as a member of the Boston Employment Commission for a term expiring January 3, 2026. Docket number 0944, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Darren Howell as a member of the Boston Employment Commission for a term expiring January 3, 2026. Docket number 0945, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Eamon Shelton as Commissioner of Property Management. Docket number 0946, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Christine Weir as interim executive officer of the Retirement Board. Docket number 0947, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Jerica Bradley as temporary second assistant collector treasurer for a period of 60 days, effective July 25, 2022. Docket number 0948, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of June 29, 2022. And docket number 0949, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of July 13, 2022.
Thank you. Docket 0940 to... The chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty.
Just with respect to docket 0944, I'm of the opinion, I believe that the Boston Employment Commission, I believe it requires you to be a resident of the city of Boston to serve on the Boston Employment Commission. So, at the very least, if we could just maybe put that aside until we get confirmation, given that the appointee is from Quincy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else have any further comments on this issue? The chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Anderson. Counsel Fernando Anderson, you have the floor.
Counsel Flaherty, you're referring to Darren Howell?
Correct.
He's a constituent in my district and lives in my district. I door-knocked his home at least three times. I can confirm that he lives there, but if we need further documentation, I guess.
Through the chair to my colleague, so is Quincy, is that Quincy Street? Any district of Quincy, Massachusetts? Because it's listing address of Quincy, Massachusetts, which also technically could be the address of the union that he works at. So, again, I just... Perfect. Very good. So, if through the administration, if they can just clarify and resubmit with his correct address as opposed to his business address, given that he's going to serving on the Boston... And I know Darrell, Darrell actually served here as a member of the council. Very thoughtful, fine, hard-working gentleman. But with respect to the Boston Employment Commission, I believe he had to be a resident of the city of Boston. He clearly is a resident of the city of Boston. It looks like it might be a typo here, or they might just need to put his home address down. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty, for bringing that to our attention. Mr. Clerk, can we hold that docket on, put it on file until we get some further clarification? They all got to go on file?
So, we'll just get a new letter?
We'll just get a new letter.
Okay. Thank you. Docket 0940 to 0949 will be placed on file, and we will review that with an updated letter from the mayor's office as well. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0950.
Docket number 0950, the constable bonds for Carla Arias, Dominique Chester, Inez Chester, John Consolo, Tamika Dash, and Mark Weisberg has been duly approved by the Collector Treasurer, were received and approved.
Thank you. Docket 0950 is approved under the usual terms and conditions. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0951 to 0954.
Docket number 0951, communication was received from the city, Boston City Archives, regarding the fiscal year 2022 Research and Access Report. Docket number 0952, notice was received from the auditing department providing fiscal year 2023 payroll allotment schedules for all city departments. And docket number 0953, communication was received from the Compensation Advisory Board regarding the salaries of elected officials, department heads, and senior leadership positions in the city of Boston. And docket number 0954, notice was received from the mayor regarding docket number 0503, approving in part and disapproving in part. I disapprove Paragraph 9 and approve the remaining items in the order set forth in Paragraphs 1 through 8.
Thank you. Docket 0951 through 0954 will be placed on file. Reports on committees. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0274, 0348, 0349, and 0375 together, please. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0274-0348-0349 and 0375 together, please.
Docket number 0274, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on February 16, 2022. Docket number 0274, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,642,723.10 in the form of a grant for fiscal year 22 Senator Charles E. Shannon Jr. Community Safety Initiative awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund regional and multidisciplinary approaches to combat gang violence through coordinated prevention and intervention, law enforcement, prosecution, and reintegration programs. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket number 0348, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on March 9, 2022. Docket number 0348, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $237,500 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 22 Hazmat earmark awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund decontamination equipment, vehicle, and maintenance expenses for the hazard response team at Boston Fire Department. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket number 0349, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on March 9, 2022. Docket number 0349, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $150,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 22 COVID-19 SADV Trust Fund awarded by the Department of Public Health to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund two full-time domestic violence advocates who will work with social service agency partners at the Boston Public Health Commission Family Justice Center. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. And docket number 0375, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on March 16, 2022. Docket number 0375, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $555,166.40 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 20 Assistance to Firefighters Grant awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund safety training and fitness equipment to support officer health and wellness. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on July 26 on the aforementioned public safety docket that were just read into the record by Clerk Juentez to be administered by the Boston Police Department and the Boston Fire Department, and they were sponsored by Mayor Wu. The dockets 0274 and 0349 will be administered through the Police Department with the support of valued and trusted community partners. The Shannon Grant will fund regional and multidisciplinary approaches to combat gang violence through coordinated prevention and intervention, law enforcement, and reintegrated programs. The community partners for this grant are selected through a competitive RFP process, and they include the Boston Public Health Commission, Boston Centers for Youth and Families, BMC, and VIAP, among others. There has been an increase in investment to $350 per young person. Docket 0349, that grant will fund, as mentioned, two full-time domestic violence advocates who will work with social service agency partners at the Boston Public Health Commission and the Family Justice Center. And it was explained during the hearing that these advocates will reach out to victims of domestic violence and provide services, including assistance with obtaining restraining orders. BPD explained that the advocates will be located in Districts B2 and B3 and will be providing assistance in District C11. With respect to docket 0348 and 0375, those grants will be administered by the Boston Fire Department. Docket 0348 will fund decontamination equipment, vehicle, and maintenance expense for the hazard response team over at the Boston Fire Department. And docket 0375, that grant will fund safety training and fitness equipment to support the officer health and wellness program, which was also referred to the committee back on March 16, 2022. As a result of the public testimony hearing as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend the following dockets. Docket 0274, Docket 0348, Docket 0349, and Docket 0375 pass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. We will take a vote on them. Counsel Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docket 0274. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Docket 0274 has passed. Counsel Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docket 0348. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Docket 0348 has passed. Counsel Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docket 0349. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Docket 0349 has passed. Counsel Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docket 0375. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Docket 0375 has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0351.
Docket number 0351, the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigrant Advancement, to which was referred on March 9, 2022. Docket number 0351, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $36,250 in the form of a grant for the Dialogue to Action awarded by the Boston Redevelopment Authority to be administered by the Office of Resiliency and Racial Equity. The grant will fund programmatic activities to deepen participants' understanding of racism in historical and present-day forms and foster a sense of agency to change the system through actions at individual, interpersonal, or systemic levels. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Luzen, Chair of the Committee on Civil Rights, Immigration Advancement. Counsel Luzen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This matter was sponsored by Mayor Michelle Wu and referred to the committee on March 9, 2022. The committee held a hearing on July 21, 2022, where public comment was taken and where President Flynn was present. This grant will allow the Office of Resiliency and Racial Equity to use these funds through the Dialogue to Action for programs to provide education and understanding of racism in historical and present-day forms. The grant will seek to develop ways to make changes through action. Lori Nelson, Chief Resilience Officer from the Mayor's Office of Resilience and Racial Equity, attended the hearing and testified in support of the grant. Ms. Nelson explained that the grant will be used for community impact projects, which will examine how the community looks at reality and race matters to collectively move forward. I inquired about the Dialogue to Action Initiative, which is a pilot program, and Ms. Nelson explained that Dialogue to Action provides education on race matters, has three staffers, and also uses fellows. Ms. Nelson reviewed some of the external partners, which include King Boston, many of us are familiar. Ms. Nelson described the takeaways from the initial pilot program, which included the following: the importance of having historical places of race in Boston, and supporting cultural differences through an inclusionary approach, unifying the community around difficult topics, and creating safe spaces so that people have a place for their voices to be heard. I asked if specific neighborhoods were targeted in these pilot programs, and Ms. Nelson explained that the goal, the initial framework, was to target every neighborhood, and that through coalition building, the objective is to target neighborhoods that may not have had these types of conversations. I asked if any barriers existed to execution in the programming, and if the programs or discussions will be in person. And we had a robust and really interesting conversation about the work that we're trying to do around having those citywide conversations. The committee discussed the information and education, our key components of Dialogue to Action Initiative, and comments from the public discuss civil rights matters in general. Passage to this order will allow the Office to use these funds to support the continued pilot for Dialogue to Action objectives. Having these funds will allow for the expansion and continuation of programs and resources to help better understand racism historically and present day, and to implement personal and systemic changes. By the Chair of the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigrant Advancement, to which this following was referred, I submit a report recommending that this docket ought to pass. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Luzen. Counsel Luzen seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docket 0351. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Docket 0351 has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket 0682?
Docket number 0682, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on May 25, 2022. Docket number 0682, order for a home rule petition regarding electronic application and transmission of absentee ballots for absent uniformed services voters. Submits a report recommending that the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. The Committee on Government Operations held a working session on July 14, 2022 on Docket 0682, a petition for a special law relative to an act on electronic application and transmission of absentee ballots for absent uniformed services voters, which was sponsored by Counsel Erin Murphy and Ed Flynn. I'd like to thank my council colleagues for attending, Counsel Murphy and Counsel Luzen. I'd also like to thank members of the administration, Robert Santiago, Commissioner of the Mayor's Office of Veteran Services, Anita Tavares, Commissioner of the Boston Election Department, and Sabino Pimonte, Head Assistant Registrar of Voters for the Boston Elections Department, for their participation as well, as the Law Department for reviewing and providing language suggestions in preparation for the working session. This home rule petition would authorize the city of Boston to allow absent uniformed services voters defined as those located outside of their voting district to apply for absentee ballots electronically. During the working session, we heard from the administration on limitations of snail mail when sending ballots to uniformed services voters, including the amount of time and the potential changes in assignments and locations. Additionally, to ensure we included all branches of our armed forces, the Air National Guard and the Army National Guard were added to the Second Whereas Clause, as well as including overseas citizens, so the title, to the title as to not exclude similarly situated individuals protected under the federal law of the Uniformed and Overseas Citizen Absentee Voting Act. Lastly, the committee reviewed the changes by the Law Department, which was only adding the phrase "a secure electronic voting system" in the second section of, the second sentence of Section 1 before the word "email." As Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend that this docket ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Chair Arroyo, for your leadership. And I won't repeat what you said. We did have a great session to work through the language and make sure that, as you know, Massachusetts citizens have a right to vote in all elections, even if they're deployed or stationed overseas, and this is going to help those who are overseas make sure they're able to vote. So the Uniformed and Overseas Citizen Absentee Voting Act is a federal law that guarantees voting rights for the United States military, who are known as uniformed service voters. So I am also urging our, my colleagues that we pass this home rule petition so that we are allowing our military to vote when they're out of their district. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. I will speak very briefly on this. Just want to echo what Counsel Murphy, Counsel Arroyo highlighted, the importance of making sure that military personnel serving overseas have the same rights as anyone else does in the state. So this would be a tremendous opportunity, accomplishment for service members so that they can vote electronically while they're in various other locations outside of the United States. Want to thank my city council colleagues for supporting this. Want to say thank you to my city council colleagues for supporting veterans' issues. Want to say thank you also to Mayor Wu as well, and Commissioner Santiago for their important work as well. Counsel Arroyo seeks acceptance of the committee report in a new draft in passage of Docket 0682. All those in favor say aye. Mr. Clerk, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on Docket 0682. Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bork.
Aye.
Counsel Bork, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Luzen.
Yes.
Counsel Luzen, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes.
Thank you. Docket 0682 has passed in a new draft. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket 0862 through 0685 together, please?
Docket number 0862, the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, to which was referred on July 13, 2022. Docket number 0862, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 22 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $145,115 to provide funding for the Boston Police Department for the fiscal year 22 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the Boston Police School Traffic Supervisors Association, Inc., BPS TSA. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket number 0863, the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, to which was referred, July 13, 2022. Docket number 0863, message in order for the supplemental appropriation order for the Boston Police Department for fiscal year 22 in the amount of $145,115 to cover the fiscal year 22 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the Boston Police School Traffic Supervisors Association, Inc., BPS TCA. The terms of the contracts are September 1, 2020, through August 31, 2023. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, and 2% to be given in September of each fiscal year of the contract term. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket number 0864, the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, to which was referred, on July 13, 2022. Docket number 0864, message in order for your approval in order for, to reduce the fiscal year 23 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $108,158 to provide funding for the Property Management Department for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Boston and the Municipal Police Patrolmen's Association, MPPA. Submits a report recommending that the report ought to pass. And docket number 0865, the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, to which was referred, on July 13, 2022. Docket number 0865, message in order for the, a supplemental appropriation order for the Property Management Department for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $108,158 to cover the fiscal year 23 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the Municipal Police Patrolmen's Association, MPPA. The terms of the contract include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, and 2% to be given in each, in October of each fiscal year of the contract term, filed in the office of the city clerk on July 11, 2022. Submits a report recommending that the report ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bork, Chair of the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Counsel Bork, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. As is mentioned in the committee report, we held a hearing on this on July 18, 2022, all four of these dockets. Per usual with collective bargaining, there are pairs of dockets where we both would take the money out of the existing reserve and then attribute it to the appropriate department. The two ones up for consideration here are the school traffic supervisors, who manage folks crossing the street, our kids, when they go to BPS, and then the municipal police officers, who folks know well. One of their main stations, obviously, is City Hall, and we pass them every day. Both contracts follow the pattern of the recent round of contracts of 2%, 1.5%, and 2% raises over the three years of the contract, remind the council that because these have been out of contract for a while, most of those are retroactive payments, and it, you know, the last one is effective this September, and obviously, a number of these will be up in the near future. And so one thing that's come up with, in many of these, is sort of the question of does that really reflect the, you know, inflation and the competitiveness of our, like, labor situation right now? And I think one of the things the administration said is, you know, we've got another round that are coming up soon enough with, that are, you know, about the kind of years going forward. Both of them have a one-time lump sum payment, nonprecedent setting, kind of, it's something that's been done for a bunch of our civilian unions to kind of just acknowledge the difficulty of this work over the last few years. So in the case of the municipal officers, it's a $1,000 one-time lump sum payment, minus standard deductions. And then for the traffic supervisors, who, which is a part-time role, it's 375 minus standard deductions. The agreement also updated the military lea- The agreement also updated the military leave policy for, in the same way that some other prior ones had, and it was basically just realigning us with the way that the feds had rewritten that and making it a little bit more supportive and generous to our members who might be doing military service. And then the, the traffic supervisors, one codifies the COVID vaccine policy. That's not codified on the municipal one, because it had already been done with that union prior to this agreement. And then the municipal officers, also, the City of Boston paid parental leave policy and the addition of Juneteenth as a, as a holiday for them were both formalized. Again, neither of those provisions are in with the traffic supervisors, because it's part-time work, not a full-time thing. We were joined by Councilors Murphy, Braden, and Flynn at the hearing. Thank you to my colleagues for joining. And I think just a kind of overall theme on both of these fronts was that, you know, the council, councilors in attendance certainly felt like the municipal police officers and the traffic supervisors are not paid enough, and that with the traffic supervisors, you know, obviously, if those positions go unfilled, we see, you know, we don't, we don't have folks supervising those crossings to school, and it's really important to us that they be safe. And then our municipal police officers, we have a substantial number of vacancies right now, and so, there's also a, a small increase to the, the base rate for them on, on details that, that they do, which are somewhat different from the details that the BPD does. But I think the basic view that their, their jobs have changed a bit with the passage of the Police Reform Act last year, and, and that also has caused, caused a lot of turnover. And so, thinking about, in the same way that we are with the Park Rangers, how we make those really competitive, appealing jobs going forward, and making sure that they're doing the things that the city wants, wants those roles to be doing, as, as I said, they're really important folks of welcome here in the building. So, that was sort of all kind of on the table for future conversation, and just wanted to raise it here. But my recommendation today would be that all four of these dockets pass through council. Again, they're very much in line with the other ones that we've been considering in passing, and it does leave our collective bargaining reserve overall at 4.7 million for FY '22 and 75.3 million for FY '23. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Bock. Would anyone else like to speak on these matters before we take a vote?
I just, I just wanted to highlight and thank Council Bock for having these hearings. We have a lot of municipal workers that are low-paid workers. We expect them to live in the city with residency. Municipal police officers, I believe, are making like $16 or $17 an hour. We had, we hired several recently, and they, they left, they quit at the, at the first day because, because the salary is so low. This is, this is certainly something we support, a pay raise for those dedicated workers, but it's really, it's really not enough. It's almost, it's almost embarrassing, in my, in my opinion. We need to do a better job of paying our municipal police officers. They protect us here in this building. Most of them, I think 60% of them, are officers of color, and we owe it to these workers to give them a decent wage and treat them fairly and treat them with respect, but giving them $15, $16 an hour and, and making them live in the city, that's a recipe for disaster. Let me recognize Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Councilor Bock. I just want to go on record to say that I hope that the administration and us as a council will have more conversations, and this will prompt us to highly consider raising wages for the lowest-paid workers who are struggling to live here in the city. The salary structure we have is just not enough to attract talent, especially with such high inflation, skyrocketing gas prices, and a booming real estate market. Many departments are struggling to find new hires and keep them, and we need to give back to our council workers, our city workers. We are running a city government, and we need all hands on deck, and we have to provide fair wages to our hard-working staff so that we can continue to succeed together. And I assume it will, but when we have the working session on our own raises and the mayor's raisers, raise, I hope that we talk about all of the city employees. And I know I was there one day, and I know the mayor and other councilors have showed up to Starbucks and other workers across the city that we do want to advocate for and make sure that they have a living wage, but if we're fighting for our baristas at the coffee shops across the city, I do believe we should also be standing up and fighting for our municipal police and the workers that are here in City Hall and across the city, keeping our city running, just like we are. So, I just want to go on record and say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker? You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to kind of reinforce what you had said and what Council Murphy had said. We need to look at the structure and the way we pay, and we're just talking about the security guards now. It's across the board in, in the city. I come from a city, city department background, and the step raises are out of line. The entrance isn't enough at $16, I think we said, and then when someone goes through all the steps, they're still only at $23 or $24. So, we need to, and, and we are unable or not allowed to have those discussions. So, however we, however we communicate that this is important to us, that we need to look at step raises and increasing those, especially in this time when we talk about needing to attract talent at, at higher levels, and I totally agree with that. We need to pay more at the higher, higher level to be able to attract real talent here, and our raises are a little kind of separate from that. But to be able to attract talent, it needs to start at the bottom, increases all the way up. We've, we've had a pretty good, you know, run as far as taxes and our, and our income coming in to the City of Boston, so it's time for us to, to start using some of that on our, on our employees that are, that are lower paid. So, thank you, and, and it is a little off-topic of, of these union contracts here, but it's, whenever we get a chance to talk about something like this, we need to talk about it. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Baker. The chair recognizes Council Bock. Council Bock, you have the floor.
My apologies, Mr. President, just to seek acceptance of the committee report.
Okay. Thank you, Council Bock. Council Bock seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0682. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docket 0682 has passed. Council Bock seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0863. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docket 0683 has passed. Council Bock seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0684. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docket 0684 has passed. Council Bock seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of 0865. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docket 0865 has passed. We're on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0955 through 0960 together.
Document number 0955, Councilor Murphy offered the following. Order for a home rule petition regarding the disability pension for Matthew Morris. Document number 0956, Councilor Murphy offered the following order for a home rule petition regarding the disability pension for Harry Jean. Document number 0957, Councilor Murphy offered the following order for a home rule petition regarding the disability pension for Terry Cotton. Document number 0958, Councilor Murphy offered the following order for a home rule petition regarding the disability pension for Ryan Lanane. And document number 0959, Councilor Murphy offered the following order for a home rule petition regarding a disability pension for Scott O'Brien. And document number 0960, Councilor Murphy offered the following order for a home rule petition regarding the disability pension for Richard Santolo.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. So, I'm asking that we don't take action on these petitions today, and we keep them in committee so we can hold a working session before our next council meeting, so we can get the language correct before we vote and send them back up to the State House for approval. As many of you remember, these six police officers who were injured in the line of duty was brought forward by Councilor Asabi George last session, and were all unanimously passed. And I have been working with the police union in the State House, because the state initially rejected these home rule petitions due to the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission not supporting the language the council and the mayor previously approved. We have the proper language now, so we can add that in our working session. And I also know that we have the home rule petitions for Kurt Stokenger and Elena McAllister that are still in committee, and we will have working sessions to also include the proper language in their home rule petition, so we can vote on their disability and retirement at our next council meeting and get them all up to the State House for passage before their next year's session. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The chair to Council Murphy. Council Murphy, will, will Stokenger, Kurt Stokenger and Elaine also be added to the other police officers that are going up?
So, the chair, Arroyo may know better, but I know talking with Councilor McDonald, that they're still in committee, so I didn't need to put them back, but because the State House rejected them, I filed so that they'll stay in the committee so we don't have to refile them, and we could have working sessions. Maybe we'll have all eight together. We may need to have two separate, but I think Chair Arroyo would know better on that. And then we could vote on all eight of them at the next council meeting. And the State House said if we have them up to them by then, they will be able to pass before next session, next year's session.
Thank you, Council Murphy, for the important work that you're doing on this.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes Councilor Arroyo. Councilor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you. There you go. Thank you, President Flynn. Thank you, Council Murphy. So, we already had a hearing for Kurt Stokenger, and what will end up happening is we will have a working session with the ones that we've already had hearings on, and we will go forward with those by, the goal is to get these before this body on August 31st. I don't see anything stopping us from that. The one thing I will note is that I am fairly certain that last year, when the council voted on this, they actually voted on three of these names. And so, I have to go look back and make sure that some of these folks have actually had their hearings and have provided medical records, because if I remember correctly, the initial drop from Anissa Asabi George had these names on it, but the final one that we voted on had Harry Jean, Terry Cotton, and Ryan Lanane. And so, I have to make sure that all of these names have actually been vetted with medical records and hearings, but the ones that already have, which are the names I just said for certain, I have to go look and make sure that I'm accurate on these other ones. And the ones that we've already done, that have already been filed, will be going up before August 31st, so, or on August 31st. So, I will make sure that as a committee, we send out to folks those videos of their hearings, so that folks can familiarize themselves with it, as well as the actual working session date. When we schedule it, it will be this month, so that folks can come in and, and speak to the changes that the State House is asking for, for uniformity. I think it is a good sign that the State House is asking for uniformity on that, because it indicates to me that they are looking towards passage of these. And so, we will do all of that in that session. I have to make sure that all of these names have actually already had a hearing. I'm not certain that they have. If they haven't, then I can't guarantee those names will go up on 31st, but the other ones will. We won't hold them back for that. And so, I just have to double-check on that before the 31st. Thank you.
And thank you, Council Arroyo. I'm just wondering if, I'm, I'm just wondering, from the chair to Council Arroyo, I'm just wondering if, if we're able to determine, if we're able to do a little bit of research now to determine if an actual hearing was held on those three individuals. Maybe, maybe legal counsel can check while we're still, we're still meeting.
We have the money, just need to confirm the dates.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Council Arroyo. We'll take a brief recess. We're in the process of reviewing Doc at 095520960. We're seeking some follow-up information from legal counsel, but at this time, could I recognize Council Arroyo? Council Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. It does seem that we did, now I remember, we did two votes. We had one set, and then we had a second set later in that year. The pandemic and all the Zooms blurred together. But these all went up together, so they'll go all together as one unit, and then we will add Kurt Stokenger and our EMS on there. I was told by our council that there's one edit that may come from the state that we don't have yet, but that we should have it by the 31st. So, what we will do is schedule that meeting and give ourselves time to actually get that edit. But once that happens, we'll have a working session and do that. And then we will send out all of these committee hearings that happened, so that folks can get familiar with them, who were not here last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. So, Doc at 09552, Doc at 0960 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. They'll stay in committee, basically. Mr. Clerk, please read Doc at 0961.
Document 0961, Council of York, Council Louie Jen.
The Chair.
Ordinance on any city of Boston code ordinance, Section 1, codified city.
Policy regarding the display of flags on City Hall Plaza. The Chair recognizes Council Bach. You have the floor, Council Bach.
So much, Mr. President. Thank you so much, Mr. President. Mr. President, if I could suspend Rule 12 and add you to this docket?
Seeing and hearing no objection, so ordered.
Excellent. And, well, I'll also be seeking through the Chair of Government Operations suspension and passage, but I'll leave that to the Chair. So, you know, I think many of us have the experience of walking out of Government Center, T-Stop, and looking up and seeing the three city flag poles, and then seeing behind them City Hall. And, you know, if you walked out, if you weren't a city councillor, you were just a resident of the city of Boston, and you walked out and you looked up at the flag pole, and you saw a flag you didn't happen to know flying on the third pole, you might well say to the person with you, "Oh, I wonder why the city's flying that flag today. Wonder which flag that is." And I think the reality of the situation is that when people see our three flag poles there with the US flag, the state flag, and often, but not always, the city of Boston flag and City Hall behind it, they identify those flag poles with City Hall. And that has been the kind of history of that site. What the Supreme Court basically said to us in the decision that came down a couple of months ago was, yes, that's true, and it clearly looks like these flag poles should be operated as kind of an extension of City Hall and expressing the city's messages. But the way you guys were running your program to manage the third flag pole opened you up to a different interpretation, because we were running a program where people could basically just fill out an application and say, "Hey, I want my flag up there," and we would raise it. And in the context in which we're doing that, taking all comers, it's then not acceptable under the First Amendment to pick out one entity, in this case, can't Constitution, and say, "You can't raise your flag." And I think, you know, the court gave us a thoughtful and reasonable judgment on that front. Fortunately, it also laid out a roadmap in the decision by Justice Breyer for how the council could, and really the city, could reassert the fact that those flag poles are an extension of City Hall and are a place where we express the messages of the city of Boston. And the way I would think about this from a kind of First Amendment perspective is that you could have any sign you wanted and walk down Cambridge Street in protest, and your First Amendment right is to have that sign in your hands saying whatever you want to say. If you went to hang that sign up on City Hall, our property management department would be within its rights to take it down and saying, "Oh, that's not something that the mayor or the council put up on the building." And so, basically, what this is about is identifying the flag poles as a site of government speech in the same way that what we do with the lights or with anything hanging from City Hall, et cetera, is a site of government speech expressing the messages of the city of Boston. And I think that's important, because I think that our residents, when they see the flag poles, they do expect those messages to be coming from us. And obviously, both this body and the mayor are the duly elected representatives of the people of Boston. And so, the ordinance that's before you today would basically follow the Supreme Court's recommendations, and it's been reviewed by the city's Supreme Court legal counsel, to set up a policy that would follow what the court suggested, which is that we clearly be making a kind of codified city decision when we raise a flag on that third flag pole that isn't the city of Boston's flag. And so, this creates two paths for that. One runs through this body by through a resolution, and the other runs through a mayoral proclamation, so that either side of the Fifth Floor can do that. And, you know, I think there's a couple of reasons to seek suspension and passage today. One is that having been told, hey, like, you need to have a different policy on this if you want to operate a flag raising program, I think that it makes sense for the city to have that policy in place as soon as possible and kind of end this interregnum. And also know that, you know, there are communities that we've, like, often on this council wanted to support and raise flags for. I think, like, there's a lot of folks who would love to see a mayoral proclamation enabling us to raise the Dominican flag next week on Restoration Day. I heard recently from Council Flaherty that, you know, there might be an opportunity later in the month to support Ukraine with a flag raising. These are all decisions that would, under this new policy, have to be made by other council resolution or proclamation of the mayor. But none of that can happen unless we actually codify this new policy and statute. So, I think it gives us an opportunity to follow the law, be clear based on the Supreme Court decision that we got, and go back to a mode and sort of on better footing this time, where we, as the representatives of the city of Boston, express, you know, all of the cultures and messages that we'd like to include and celebrate using that flag pole as an extension of us. So, I'm really grateful to my colleagues, Counselor, Counselor Louie Jen, who's one of the legal minds of the council, and to President Flynn. And I'll also say that, as I mentioned before, both the Supreme Court counsel that the city retains for Supreme Court advice and also the Law Department have reviewed this legislation in detail. So, thank you, Mr. President. And as I mentioned, it's, I think, the business of the chair since of government operations, but we are seeking through him suspension and passage today.
Thank you, Council Bach. The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jen. Council Louie Jen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I won't speak long, because I think Council Bach covered most of it. But, you know, we as a city, city council, we love our flag raisings for too long now. Too many of our communities haven't had the opportunity to raise a flag because of this outstanding Supreme Court litigation that has been costly and time and has taken a lot of our time and attention. Justice Breyer gave us good guidelines on which we could have flag raisings that really are speech that we endorse here as a body, or endorsed by the mayor, both in terms of celebrating the diversity of our city and the richness of our cultures and the causes that we support. And I think the language and the ordinance was reviewed and edited and made as inclusive as possible. So, I think this is a good path forward, so that we can start raising flags, like Council Bach said, next week, the Dominican flag, there are many flags that, you know, celebrations that we have for the remainder of the year and for next year that we want to start getting started on. So, I think this is a fair ordinance in response to the Supreme Court's decision, and it allows us to get back to the business that we're doing and supporting the speech that we want to support on City Hall Plaza. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jen. I recognize Council President Ed Flynn.
Thank you, Council Arroyo, and glad to partner with my colleagues and, you know, with city councillors and with Mayor Wu's team as well. I think flying a flag on City Hall has the opportunity to bring us together as a city. We celebrate various countries. We celebrate their contributions and sacrifices to the United States, whether it's Mexico, whether it's Ireland, whether it's another country. But it's about bringing people together. It's about recognizing the sacrifice that immigrants have made to our city and to our country. And the other aspect I'd like to highlight, too, is I always love looking up when I see a flag and seeing the POW MIA flag, which is often at many city and state buildings, and that's the prisoner of war missing in action. And that's to remember service members that are unaccounted for still to this day, serving overseas. But that flag is also a reminder to their family that our city did not forget them or our country did not forget them. So, when I see that, when I see that flag, I have a smile on my face, because I know that those military families are being thought of by our city government or by our federal government. Thank you, Council Arroyo.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. In order for me to speak on it.
The Chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
You're welcome. You're sure. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question. So, through you to either one of the lead sponsors, every flag raising will have to have a resolution that comes through here. What is the mayor's, if, so if the mayor wants a flag raising, that will have to be a resolution that comes through here and a vote on it?
The Chair recognizes Council Bach. Council Bach, can you respond to that question?
Yes, thank you. No, it's either a mayoral proclamation or a city council resolution. So, the idea being that the way that the council expresses sort of the sense of the body formally is by resolution. The way that the mayor expresses is through proclamation. I think folks have often seen folks receiving, it's, you know, their equivalent on the mayoral side write that folder and the proclamation. And so, it's basically the idea that either body, the key thing from the court's decisions perspective was that we needed to kind of express it as officially our message, like, from the city of Boston. So, the idea is we use either the council's way of sort of expressing official things or the mayor's way.
And one more question. Would the mayor's proclamation have to be voted in this body here?
The Chair recognizes Council Bach.
No, it would follow the same, the current path by which the mayor promulgates proclamations, which is unilateral on her side.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, I'm a little concerned about taking votes on up or down on different flags. I'm going to support this here today, but I think we potentially can be the brunt of the joke on this one here, because I think what will come in front of us all the time will be those really controversial ones, and we'll have to vote on them, and we'll be in the paper when it comes to Satanic Temple and whatever other sort of fringe groups come in front of us that want to have their flags flown. I'm trying to, I'm trying to see around that. So, again, I'm feeling like I'm going to support this, but I do think there is potential in the future for us to be in the middle of a Supreme Court fight that we don't necessarily want to be in or should be in. So, I do have some concerns, and I'll figure out the vote when it's in front of me.
Thank you, Council Baker. I'm going to go to Council Braden, then I'm going to go back to Council Bach. Council Bach, did you need to say something immediately?
I was just thinking that.
Because it's directly on Council Baker's point.
Yeah, the Chair recognizes Council Bach.
So, just because this is another point of clarification, part of what's shifting here is that whereas for before, there was like an intake form for people to raise their hand and say, "Hey, I want my flag raised," because these are expressions of the city, like, there is not an intake form type thing. So, basically, like, there's only going to be a resolution to even be voted on that could lead to a flag raising via the city council if a member of this body introduces said resolution. So, to Council Baker's point about sort of like people putting things up to kind of force straw votes, like, it would only be if somebody on this council moved such a resolution that it could be voted on. So, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Bach. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Council Bach, Louie Jen, and yourself, President Flynn, for initiating the formal codification of the city policy regarding regulating our city-managed public spaces for government speech. I think one of the things that we basically didn't have, we didn't have a formal codification of a policy to oversee the flag raising issue, so that got us into trouble. And it begs the question, you know, as we think, one of the issues that we've been working on as an office is to review the recodification of our ordinances, and I think this is an opportune time to look at all of these issues. I know this is a slight sort of segue or a sidebar to the conversation about specifically to the flag raising issue. In Chapter 8 of the ordinances in 1975, the city established a Uniform Procedure for the Adaptation and Promulgation of Forms and Regulations by the City Departments, adopting the Massachusetts State Administrative Procedures Act. So, you know, after 50 years, I think the Supreme Court has, in the case of the flag raising issue, has given us a timely reminder that we need to maybe initiate a review of how all of our department regulations are adopted and promulgated. And, you know, in the context of reviewing our codification of our ordinances, I look forward to, you know, digging deeper into that and trying to get some consistency. You know, with this, an issue with codification of the flag raising issue, I'm sure there's other issues that we need to attend to as well, just to, in a matter of good housekeeping and putting everything in order. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. The Chair recognizes Council Arroyo. Council Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. As Chair of Government Operations, I will be seeking suspension of Rule 33, so that this matter can be adopted today. I think much of sort of the nuance on the new legal sort of findings, as well as why it's important, have already been discussed, so I'm going to keep it very short, just to say that this ordinance doesn't conflict with any city of Boston code or ordinances. And I'd also like to thank the original co-sponsors of the ordinance, Council Bach and Louie Jen, for bringing this to the floor, so that we can clearly establish guidelines for the display of flags by the city of Boston. And I think it's already been said, but this has already been vetted by both our Law Department and our council that we use for Supreme Court cases. And so, I think this is ready to go today, which is why I'm offering it up as a suspended pass. Thank you to the makers. Thank you as well to you as an original co-sponsor, President Flynn. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. So, I did have some concerns when I first saw this, that this would be a violation of free speech, and I do have to say thank you to Council Bach for easing my concerns there when you talked to me through that. The one question that I still have, and if one of the original sponsors could reply, why does the mayor need us also? Why can't it just be a decision by the mayor? Why are we, the council, also weighing in on the flag? Why are we, the council, also weighing in on the flagpoles, which I thought were the mayor's flagpoles? Because I know in the past, we have this balcony out here, and maybe that's a different conversation the council can have on if we want to hang flags off our council balcony. But if someone could just clear that up, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach to respond to that question from Counsel Murphy.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I think, so first of all, obviously, there's no requirement that the council ever take resolution action to lead to a flag-raising, and certainly, like, it could become the pattern in practice that we ceded that to the mayor. I think that, that said, I'll be a little bit of an institutionalist here, like, I think that this council represents the city of Boston just as much as the mayor does. And so when we're talking about an ordinance that we would codify into our municipal code, I think it would, it would sort of be a shame for the council to kind of cede its right to also establish a message of the city of Boston. Even if in practice, we end up, you know, deciding that it's, it makes more sense to let the mayoral proclamations become the default or something, I think that it would sort of be a seeding of, like, our kind of like rights and prerogatives to also express messages on behalf of the city of Boston, which I take us to be doing every time we file a resolution on something. So I think that's the reason. That said, obviously, like, you know, when you think about even just timing things, right, like, if this were to pass today and we were to be talking about the, being able to raise a flag as the city for the Dominican Restoration Day on Tuesday, because we don't have a resolution before us here, obviously, that would be done by mayoral proclamation. So, and I think obviously, there will often be times where the council's Wednesday meeting schedule is such that it makes more sense to do it by proclamation. But I will just say that I would feel queasy about giving up our prerogative as a duly-elected body representing Boston to also be a decision-maker on this. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. Does anyone else have any questions or comments on this? Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. The, Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Royal, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Please add Counsel Lara, Counsel Flaherty. Please add, please add Counsel Rell. Counselors Bach, Louie Jen, and Flynn are seeking suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0961. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0961 has passed. How she wanted to be a smartphone?
Sorry, it wasn't, yeah. That's okay. Thank you.
Docket 0962.
Docket number 0962, Counsel Flynn offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss safety concerns associated with double-decker sightseeing buses and requirement of double-decker bus public safety measures in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Flynn. Counsel President Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. This would be a hearing to discuss the process of double-decker sightseeing bus, but it's really an opportunity for us to learn more about safety challenges a double-decker bus has in the city. This is not to stop the operation of a double-decker bus, but it's to get some clarification on making sure that everybody is safe, tourists, the driver, pedestrians, when there is a double-decker bus. A lot of them, we see them around, we see tourists in downtown Boston on a lot of sightseeing buses, but I'm just, I just want to make sure that we present and provide the best safety for everybody, and that includes those that go on double-decker buses. It's an issue we haven't focused much attention on. So this is something that's important, to make sure that double-decker buses are safe and looking forward to learning more about the process of keeping everybody safe that would use a double-decker bus. Thank you, Ms. Counsel Royal.
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta.
Thank you. Please add my name. I just want to thank the maker for sponsoring this and calling attention to this issue. My district sees over 2 million people, visitors, to the North End in Charlestown. So there's no doubt in my mind that these types of vehicles would follow the Freedom Trail to see some of our historic treasures, like the Paul Revere House and the Bunker Hill Monument. And I'm just now finding out about these buses, to be honest, so, and their safety concerns. So I look forward to the hearing, and I thank you for your oversight and your leadership on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Seeing no hands, would anyone else like to sign on? Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Baker, please add Counsel Bach, please add Counsel Braden, please add Counsel Coletta, please add Counsel Fernandez Anderson, please add Counsel Flaherty, please add Counsel Lara, please add Counsel Louie Jen, please add Counsel Murphy, please add Counsel Rell, and please add my name. Docket 0962 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket 963?
Docket number 0963, Counsel Bach offered the following: Order for a hearing regarding enhancing Boston's COVID recovery via grants provided by the bipartisan infrastructure law.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And may I also add Counsel Brian Rell is an original co-sponsor of this.
Counsel Rell is so ordered, so added.
Great, wonderful. So the bipartisan infrastructure law, folks have heard about it, it provides an immense amount of funding for infrastructure across the country, but a lot of it is determined by competitive grants. And so it's really important that the city of Boston be an applicant and a strong and competitive applicant for as many of those grants as possible in order to get millions and millions of dollars directed towards high-priority things in the city. Across a lot of different categories of infrastructure, potential areas include road, rail, and transit, port infrastructure, buses and bus facilities, Vision Zero Plan implementation, pedestrian safety, charging and fueling infrastructure, low- and zero-emission school buses, like reconnecting communities that have been divided by highways, flood mitigation assistance, brownfields remediation, energy efficiency and conservation, energy specifically in schools, energy resilience code adoption, which relates to BERTO and the stretch code out of the state, cybersecurity, smart grid support, waste and groundwater storage and conveyance, so just like a huge set of categories of things. And there's kind of a dizzying array of notices of funding availability that are coming out of the federal government on a kind of complicated time schedule. And a bunch of these opportunities have to be applied for by our state, like various departments, and the city might be partnering with them, or some are, what, the person who's eligible was actually the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. But a bunch of the grants, the relevant applicant is the city of Boston. And so this notice is really just to stress the fact that we want to make sure that we, the city, are applying for every one of these that we can, and that the council should be informed about what those applications are, the ones that we've made, the ones that we plan to make. And if we're not applying for any of these opportunities, I really want to make sure that we all understand, is it because we really don't qualify, we have good reason to think we wouldn't be competitive? You know, there's huge opportunity here for us to really advance our Complete Streets Initiative, Recharge Boston, our Vision Zero Action Plan, the Imagine Boston 2030 Plan, Go Boston 2030. There's just a lot of things that we have been dreaming of for some time, and I would say we're probably one of the better-positioned municipalities in the country in terms of the amount of that kind of planning that we've done. But we want planning to actually turn into implementation. And so I'm super grateful to Christopher Robin Milliken, who's one of our fellows this summer, who did an in-depth dive for my office on all of these application opportunities. And we also talked to the administration, and so there's some reference in the, in the hearing order to some of the applications that they have already put in, including this 9.3 million one for the Clean School Bus Program that they put in in July, and a $100 million one for National Infrastructure Project Assistance. But there's, for instance, the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant is coming up in September, and then a whole bunch more that have, that have NOFA's that are due to come out in the third quarter of 2022. So Christopher Robin's been doing a great job for us, chasing down all of the potential opportunities, and we feel like it's very important for the residents of Boston to know that we're on top of this and for the council to have a voice in it, and for us to start getting ready for opportunities where we might get significant federal funding. So it feels to me like a very important part of our recovery, Mr. President, and thrilled to be co-sponsoring this with Counsel Rell today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. The Chair recognizes Counsel Rell. Counsel Rell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to Counsel Bach for leading on this. The bipartisan infrastructure law is an opportunity to provide real investments in climate change, reduce and prevent pollution, create lasting environmental change, improve air quality and quality of life in our city through improving infrastructure. Vision Zero Boston Action Plan and Imagine Boston 2030 directly address community interests around traffic calming measures, improving transit and walkability, and Reconnecting Communities is a grant that can advance our city initiatives, provide solutions to community concerns. An opportunity like this has the potential to have major impact on our neighborhoods and by extension, residents. Neighborhoods like Dorchester, Mattapan, and Roxbury have suffered because of lack of infrastructure in the past, with Dorchester having some of the highest temperatures to date as a result. How are we centering environmental justice, communities, and concerns in this conversation? How are we prioritizing those most impacted by lack of infrastructure investment? And how are we ensuring that implementation of these grants are distributed equitably? I'm excited to engage with questions like these and ensure that communities that have been overlooked can be heard and represented. I'm looking forward to collaborating with the council, our state, and congressional colleagues, and all the bulk departments in engaging our community in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rell. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. And just to indulge me just for a quick moment, I forgot to recognize the North Shore Community College Public Speaking Course led by Oden Fakt, Sherry Rafferty, she's an East Boston resident. I was going to tell her to provide a grade for me in my public speaking, so hopefully she will watch this in the future, and I just want to thank them for being here. But I just wanted to thank the maker for this and to please add my name and always for your due diligence in ensuring the city of Boston is doing what it needs to do to get the most out of these funds to transform and protect the public realm. We find ourselves yet again with a once-in-generation transformative opportunity, and I found myself in conversation with many advocates discussing our waterfront, no shock, no surprise, and saying out loud that I expect the city of Boston to be competitive when going after this money because we desperately need it. There is a special earmark in this federal package that will make our infrastructure resilient against the impacts of climate change and extreme weather events. This legislation is the largest investment in resilience of physical and natural systems in American history, in American history. And so Counsel Bach eloquently stated in her order that due to the short-term and competitive manner of these opportunities, we must act with urgency. I echo that, and just to summarize my own take on this, I encourage all of us to do what we can to go get this money because we need it. So I look forward to hearing from the administration and better understanding what grants they will apply for and how it will promote our city's goals for a more green and resilient future ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the makers for bringing this very important issue to light. I think it's critically important that we use every, all of our resources to try and maximize the benefits of these infrastructure grants. As Counsel Coletta has already mentioned, this is a once-in-a-generational opportunity. And, you know, in our conversations with some departments over the past few years, one issue that came up was just the support and infrastructure within our, within our administration, within government relations, et cetera, to really execute a timely application for these grants. So it's really important that we ensure that the departments have the support necessary to be successful in these competitive applications. And I hope that we can have a robust conversation and support all of our departments to every, in every way, so that they can take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The Chair, from the Chair to Counsel Bach, just a quick question, is there a central location where we find out about competitive grants? Or what is the process of cities and states finding out about competitive grants that they must apply for?
Yeah, so I think that's part of the challenge here, is that the different grant opportunities were sort of assigned to the different executive offices in DC, and then those are responsible for putting out these NOFA's, so, and the notices of funding availability. And so I think basically what's happened is like, you know, our transportation department is sort of tracking the ones from the Department of Transportation federally, and, you know, and like, and then ones that are from the EPA, our environment department might be tracking, but, but that's part of the reason to really make sure that the city is both keeping a unified list and that it's kind of like, that there's wide availability and knowledge what that is for the council. So I know that, I think that the A&amp;F folks have been trying to keep such a list, but I think it's something that should be shared with the council, and, you know, and like I mentioned, Christopher Robin in my office has done a great job of digging out all the deadlines and what hasn't been issued yet. But there's a slightly crazy aspect to this, where you sometimes just have to like, wait for the NOFA's to drop, and then suddenly, they will have all these detailed regulations and also a deadline that's like not very far away. So to Counsel Braden's point, it becomes very important for the departments to be nimble and ready and able to throw some personnel time into getting those applications in, and it really can be the difference, you know, I mean, we, when you think about how big, I mentioned the school bus one is 9.3, the, I think the, we put in in April for a raise one for Roxbury, that would be 25 million if we got that, one of these, the mega ones, 100. I mean, these are, these are things where it makes sense for us to be like ready to go on a dime, but it is a little bit of a crazy decentralized process federally.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Baker, please add Counsel Royal, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Louie Jen, Counsel Murphy. Please add the Chair. Docket 0963 will be referred to the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0964.
Docket number 0964, Counsel Murphy offered the following: Order for a hearing to address the monkeypox virus and the city's strategy for the breakout.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn, and I would like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Baker as an original sponsor, please.
Counsel Baker, is that it?
Thank you. So since the first U.S. monkeypox case was identified in mid-May, more than 6,600 probable or confirmed cases have been detected in the United States. Cases have been identified in every state so far except Montana and Wyoming. Last Thursday, August 4, the federal government declared a public health emergency against the monkeypox virus to bolster the response to the outbreak, which would free up money and other resources to fight the virus. As of Thursday, August 4, Massachusetts state officials have reported 157 confirmed cases of monkeypox. Vaccination efforts nationwide have been criticized as slow and lackluster. The federal government said it had limited supply of the genius vaccine in its stockpile, and Massachusetts has requested a total of 26,271 doses, and so far has only been sent 16,251 of that allotment. It should be noted also that the virus is not unique to the LGBTQ+ community, and these individuals shall not be stigmatized for it. The COVID-19 pandemic is still not over with the new highly-transmissional BA.5 Omicron subvariant lurking. Boston must be prepared to handle two public health threats simultaneously. And as we know on the City Council, we should be up to date with all the available information regarding monkeypox in order to best protect and educate our constituents. We learned many lessons dealing with COVID-19 over the past two years, so now it is the time to implement what worked and also change what didn't, and be a role model for other cities on how to deal with this public health threat. This is why I'm ordering a hearing with the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council to address the monkeypox virus and discuss the strategy for the city, including preventative steps, availability, and access to testing and vaccinations, treatments, and increasing knowledge and awareness of the virus to all of our residents. Thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Counsel Murphy for allowing me to sign on with this. Like you all know, the best tool to have when there is an issue in our public with public health and safety is education. We were an educated body when it came to COVID. We had, we had regular We had, we had regular meetings and were up to speed on what we should be doing to protect ourselves, protect our families. No difference here. We should know what this, what this virus is, reminds, you know, we don't want to go back to the days of the AIDS epidemic when people were afraid to interact with, with, you know, certain communities and, and, you know, it was people like Lady Di that went into the hospitals and embraced people that were sick with AIDS and shook their hands and showed them love. So it's, it's almost running a parallel path, not nearly what the AIDS epidemic was, but we need to, like I said, stay informed, and I appreciate Council Murphy for allowing us to have the hearing and become informed.
Thank you, Council Baker. The Chair recognizes Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Council Murphy for raising this issue and trying to really throw light on the severity of the monkeypox virus outbreak. The initial medical and public health coverage of the monkeypox outbreak has concerned, has concerningly framed the monkeypox as only being transmissible by, and addressed to LGBT communities, and particularly men who have sex with men. These perceptions of monkeypox have echoed stigmas and fears of the early HIV and AIDS epidemic, as Council Baker has already referred to. But monkeypox can be transferred to anyone through close personal contact, including touching objects or fabrics and surfaces that have been used by someone with monkeypox, as well as by respiratory secretions. The factual and accurate public informational dissemination is essential to try and stop this outbreak and prevent transmission and ensure awareness of and access to vaccinations and treatment. We hope that we've learned from the recent outbreak of COVID. We've, there were many hard lessons. It took, it was a totally novel virus that was spreading across the world at incredible speed, and it took us some time to get our act together and address the issues. And I'm hoping that in working with our public health professionals in the city that we can have factual information and have a really robust and appropriate response to this outbreak. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? I would also like to reference, I have reached out to the City of Boston Public Health. I've been on several calls with them on this, on this issue, and we do have a conference call that will be scheduled soon, I guess, but certainly this, this hearing is critical. We'll learn as much as we possibly can, so I want to say thank you to Council Murphy and Council Baker for bringing this forward, but also to the City of Boston Public Health Commission that has been working on this. So please raise your, raise your hand if you'd like to add on. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Arroyo, Councilor Bock, Councilor Braden, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Lara, Councilor Lujan, and the Chair. Document 0964 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. Mr. Clerk, please read document 0965.
Document number 0965, Councilor Bock offered the following: Order for a hearing on increasing green stormwater infrastructure capacity at Boston Water and Sewer and the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Bock. Councilor Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd like to seek to suspend Rule 12 and add Councilors Braden and Coletta as original cosponsors.
Seeing and hearing, no objection. Both are added.
Great, thank you. And I also want to acknowledge, I think there are many fans of green infrastructure in the council house, so if we could add more people, I would also be adding Councilor Lujan and Councilor Lara. But it's, I'm glad that there's such a caucus of support. I also want to start by offering a shout out to Alice Scolins, another one of our summer fellows who worked on this hearing order for us and has been doing a tremendous amount of research to back it up. So Boston, as some folks may know, but others may not, we maintain actually one of the oldest and largest traditional gray stormwater systems in the country, and unfortunately, you know, it really, it right now can only deal with several inches of rain in a 24-hour period. We've got, you know, storms that are projected more and more often to overwhelm those systems. BWSC, our Boston Water and Sewer, has expressed the need to expand its capacity. We're under a federal order not to let too much phosphorus go into the Charles River, which again involves having a greater capacity system. But unfortunately, the ways in which we have pursued greater capacity in the city of Boston have really been kind of gray in the sense of concrete and not looking enough, I feel, at green, green stormwater system solutions. And, you know, we've even set forward a plan for stormwater management, carbon neutrality, and assessed GSI in various places in the city, but in terms of our actual implementation, we are lagging behind cities like New York, Philadelphia, Seattle, which have developed plans and models and have hundreds of GSI developments across their city. And I saw this firsthand when I went to Philadelphia, actually looking at their Power Corps program. They've done so much green stormwater infrastructure that they have a whole division of their water department now, which is their Water and Sewer, that just maintains green stormwater infrastructure, and it's been a great source of jobs for the Power Corps folks who have trained up on, on the maintenance for these green stormwater installations and have become experts in it. And, you know, it's one of those things where I think the way that we've been thinking about it often in the city of Boston is, oh, green infrastructure, which might mean putting in a rain garden or a bioswale, or just, you know, anything where you've got a kind of nature-based solution. We look at that sometimes and we say, oh, well, those porous pavers, they might need a little bit more maintenance. They might need to be vacuumed, or they might need to be swept, and we don't have that capacity today. And so it sort of makes sense in a kind of immediate sense, oh, let's go with the set-and-forget-it concrete. But in the long run, Philadelphia's run the numbers and found that this would save an enormous amount of money if you put the green infrastructure in first, just because of how much better it handles the water. And I feel proud of the fact that Boston's one of the first cities in America to really do to scale green stormwater infrastructure. We did it more than 100 years ago with the Muddy River, which is just a giant green stormwater initiative in the middle of the city, and it's time for us to do it again more. And I think that there's an opportunity to create great jobs for our young people doing this, an opportunity to engage our communities. But engaging our communities shouldn't look like a world where because we haven't come up with a real system for green stormwater maintenance, we're saying we're only going to put green stormwater in where some community group agrees to maintain the installation. Because the reality is that creates a city of haves and have-nots and place, and the opposite of an environmental justice approach. So I was really excited to see the mayor announce Kate England coming in as our first Director of Green Infrastructure last week, and I think there's a huge opportunity to work with Boston Water and Sewer and also Public Works and all of our departments to kind of put in infrastructure to make our standards green, and then also to have a real maintenance plan attached to all those that's going to serve our communities well. But I think it's something that the council should be paying close attention to and thrilled to be joined by my cosponsors, Braden and Coletta. So thank you, Mr. President, and thank you again to Alice.
Thank you, Councilor Bock. The next original cosponsor was Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Mr. President, and thank you, Councilor, Councilor Bock and Councilor Coletta for cosponsoring this. You know, the green stormwater infrastructure capacity, the green stormwater is sort of a pet, a pet project for me. Many years ago, we had a persistent problem with, it was a big rainstorm. We had incidents of, one instance of having 18 inches of water in our basement, and we discovered that in an extreme, after a lot of weather, rain, that the rainwater was just accumulating in the ground and we were, it was coming into our basement. And then we went to a presentation that was hosted by the Alston Brighton CDC, and it was a presentation by the Charles River Watershed Association. And they presented a presentation on rain gardens and bioswales. And we, we went home and we, we, we worked, we got some help, and we, we created our own rain garden in the backyard, and all of the rainwater that hits our roof goes into our yard. So it, we don't have a flooding problem in our basement any, any longer. So this is just sort of a micro project that we have, we've used in our, in our family to manage stormwater. But when you scale that up, we had a, someone from the, the Boston Water and Sewer came by recently, and we showed him our rain, our rain garden, and he was like, wow, if we could more, get more people to do this, it would take so much of the stormwater out of our system and, and help alleviate some of the flooding issues that we have. So I feel that, you know, not only do we need to do this on a, on a, on a city level and our city departments and think about new, new neighborhoods that have been developed in, in East Boston or in Alston, that we need to be thinking about stormwater management in a very proactive and very strategic way. But I also think that we need to engage with our residents in the city to try and encourage, you know, sort of this micro approach of individuals, households having, having a rain garden in their yard to, to try and alleviate the, the increased threats of stormwater. Increased weather events with precipitous, very heavy precipitous rain is a, is a very real threat, especially, we're not going to have seawater in Oak Square, but we are going to have problems with stormwater. And I really welcome this hearing, and I hope to learn more about this issue and to also help educate our residents across the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. The Chair recognizes Councilor Coletta. Councilor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. I want to thank the maker and including me as a cosponsor, as well as my cosponsor, Councilor Braden. A forgotten crisis and tangential issue to flooding due to sea level rise is mitigating stormwater runoff and the unprecedented levels of precipitation seen in recent years. Mitigation measures have been implemented to protect our coastline from flooding, but we do not account for the water that comes through our sewer systems below our streets. New development is typically built on elevated platforms, just like they are in, in East Boston, which has helped somewhat, but when there are major storms like the Bombo genesis that took place in 2018, Council President Flynn, I know you remember this quite well, is on day three of your tenure. But water not only went up and over these elevated platforms, but they went underneath through our drainage system. And so it really was the main reason why Jeffrey's Point was flooded. And so the, the frequency of severe storms is increasing, and our stormwater infrastructure, mostly built in the mid-century, is not equipped to handle the, the volume of water that we're seeing at this present day. So in this conversation, I'd like to understand how the BBDA is looking at this and what standards for any new development taking place, and how folks are contributing to green stormwater infrastructure in their own buildings. Copenhagen planners are thinking about the rain, too, and have required a certain percentage of green spaces. Council Braden mentioned rain gardens, et cetera, which could be, which could supplement strategies of what we're doing. So I look forward to the hearing and again grateful to be added as cosponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Coletta. The Chair recognizes Councilor Lara. Councilor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to the makers and Councilor, Councilor Bock, Councilor Braden, and Councilor Coletta for moving this forward. This is something that I'm really incredibly excited about as the Chair of the Environmental Justice Committee. Part of the work that we did during the conversation about ARPA was to earmark $2.5 million to build new infrastructure around waste and compost, and I think that this is moving us in the same direction. Ultimately, if we want to be a city that is climate resilient and we want to make sure that we are looking at environmental justice with an equity lens, we're going to have to build our own infrastructure. And we're going to have to build our own infrastructure not at the cost of the, you know, economic empowerment of the people here in our neighborhoods. And so I think that this is not only an opportunity to further create jobs, but I think it's an opportunity for us to really realize the dream that we have for Power Corps, right? That it's kind of like a hub that continues to grow and provide jobs for young people, particularly in green infrastructure, so that we are a climate resilient city, but we're also providing economic opportunity and well-paying jobs to the people here in the city of Boston. So I'm really excited to support it. I thank you so much for putting it on the floor, and I'm happy to steward it through the Environmental Justice Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lara. The Chair recognizes Councilor Lujan. Councilor Lujan, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I also want to thank the sponsors, want to thank Council Bock for introducing, introducing this hearing order. We hear a lot from folks, this is a citywide issue, so I hear from folks in all of our neighborhoods about the issue of flooding, whether on Morrissey Boulevard or in different areas. The city has about 666 miles of underground stormwater pipes that are, as everyone has said, are quite old, that we need to update. One of the really great things about the city is our fiscal strength and our ability to bond for infrastructure and to bond for projects. In 2020, the city bonded for the first time green social bonds in the amount of $25 million to update our municipal infrastructure and make them climate resilient, and $35 million for affordable housing projects. We can do that here with green stormwater infrastructure, and it should continue to be a key component of the Green New Deal for the city. There have been discussions already about looking at Four Point Channel as a way to create more floodgates and to create floodgates around the city, so I'm really excited for this conversation and I think that we should be leaning into our city's fiscal strength and making sure that we are putting our resources to bear on this really important issue and protecting our communities, especially our most vulnerable communities, our EJ communities as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Lujan. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Or sign on? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Arroyo, Council Baker, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Lujan, Council Murphy, and the Chair. Before I assign it to a committee, let me, let me recognize Councilor Bock. Councilor Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we had been thinking, because my committee, City Services and Innovation Technology, oversees Boston Water and Sewer, that we would be seeking for it to come to my committee. But I also, it's obviously like an environmental issue, and Councilor Lara raised the Environmental Justice Committee, so I don't know if, if we could potentially like have it, have it come to us and have a joint hearing, or have it go to her and have a joint hearing. I just, I want to make sure that the Water and Sewer piece is there, and obviously my committee's got jurisdiction over them within the council, but I also like would love to be partnering on this, so whatever you think is appropriate.
Okay. This will be the, this will be the first time I will assign it to two committees at the same time, because it does overlap both committees, so I will, I will place it in both, both committees. So it'll be in the Committee of City Services, Innovation, and Technology, and, and the Committee on Environmental Justice. Mr. Clerk, can you please read document 0966?
Document number 0966, Councilors Coletta and Flynn offered the following: Order for a hearing regarding the coordination of construction and utility permits.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Councilor Coletta.
Thank you. Vice President Arroyo? Sorry, I never know how to address people, I'm sorry. Vice President Arroyo. We love nuts and bolts in District 1. I'm pleased to present this hearing order regarding the issuance and coordination of construction and utility permits in the city of Boston. This city is growing exponentially, and for the densest neighborhoods like East Boston, North End, like, like South Boston, there's a lot of activity when it comes to roadwork and development projects that require digging and the temporary loss of parking on our city streets. What I'm seeing in East Boston and have for the last three years is that somehow all of the roadwork that could happen at any given time takes place at the same time in two-block radiuses, and it's, it's a nightmare. In Eagle Hill in 2019, Boston Water and Sewer was digging up 100-year-old pipes while EverSource and National Grid were replacing their infrastructure, while numerous development projects shut down streets and sidewalks, while the city also repaved streets. This exact thing happened in Day Square a couple months later, and today it's happening in Jeffrey's Point. The problem is not the work, digging up streets to improve our infrastructure clearly needs to happen. The problem is a lack of coordination and notice to residents about what is happening, and I'm sure districts of the councils have heard this numerous times, and the lack of consideration for the number of projects and how it will impact residents' quality of life to be able to traverse their streets and go through their neighborhood without conflicting detours, which is happening right now in East Boston, where because Boston Water and Sewer has no idea that National Grid is digging up another street, the detours point to each other, and it's just extremely frustrating. I've already been in contact with Public Works, the Boston Transportation Department, Inspection Services, to better understand the behind-the-scenes mechanisms of the permitting approval process in the city of Boston. I'm thankful for their participation in a neighborhood walkthrough tomorrow, just to see how impactful this is. For those who would love to be in the weeds of nuts and bolts, I'd be happy to describe the COBUC system to you all, which is something that was described to me by Public Works, and it is what governs these approvals. And my goal with this hearing is to identify the obvious low-hanging fruit, which is to allocate resources, both time and money, to implementing a better system or supplementing the COBUC system with, with something that provides better coordination. So thank you again to my cosponsor, Councilor- So thank you again to my co-sponsor, Councilor Flynn, for this, and I look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Council Coletta. The Chair recognizes Council President Flynn.
Thank you, Council Arroyo, and thank you, Council Coletta, for including me, and Council Coletta, for the important work that you're doing on this, as well as all of our colleagues that are especially District Councilors, but certainly At-Lod as well. But District Councilors are often the ones that receive the call from concerned residents about a street being dug up, and they're asking, why is the street being dug up? Because six months ago, it was dug up previously, and, you know, residents are asking, why can't we coordinate digging up streets almost at the same time, or at least know what the schedule is? So if there is a street that needs to be dug up, maybe Water and Sewer could be in there and then keep the street open, and then maybe, you know, another utility company might have to do some work there as well. But I think Council Coletta summed it up best. It's about communication, it's about working together, it's about working with our District City Councilors, it's about working with our At-Lod City Councilors, it's about working with ONS as well, and everybody working together, especially on communication, so we all know what schedules of construction are taking place in our neighborhoods, because it is our job as District Councilors to communicate a message effectively to our residents why a street is being closed and what the other options are when that street is closed. You know, you can't drive on this street, but you can drive on several streets later. Council Coletta also pointed out parking. If we're closing a street down for two weeks or three weeks, is there a recommendation on where to park a vehicle? So these are all important issues, these are all important questions that this hearing will highlight. So I just want to say thank you to Council Coletta for the important work, and for my colleagues that they're doing on this issue. Thank you, Council Arroyo.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add, Council Baker, Council Bach, Council Braidon, Council Tanya Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Louis Jen, Council Murphy, Council Rurrell, and please add my name. Docket 0966 will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket 0967?
Docket number 0967, Councilors Flynn and Murphy offer the following resolution recognizing National Purple Heart Day 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council President Flynn. Council President Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Arroyo, and thank you, Council Murphy, who's Chair of Veterans Services as well. August 7th, that just passed, was National Purple Heart Day, and that day is a national day that we honor, we remember, we recognize the service and sacrifice of a Purple Heart recipient, and that is a person that was wounded in service to our country, or it's a person that was killed in service to our country. That person shed blood, shed blood for our country. So it's an important day for us to remember, to think about those disabled veterans that were wounded, those veterans that were killed in action also, and to remember their family, and to remember their sacrifice and their heartache and their pain, losing a loved one, losing a son, losing a daughter, that veteran coming home, that might be a Purple Heart recipient, might be still suffering from various wounds that he or she received in combat, and it might be having a terrible impact on that person's family, their spouse or their parents, and might be engaged in the VA medical system and mental health counseling for the rest of their life. So it's important for us to remember the incredible sacrifice and service of our Purple Heart recipients on this day, and honor to partner with Council Murphy, but I also would like to suspend and pass this resolution today so that we can recognize those that are recipients of the Purple Heart and their family. Thank you, Council Arroyo.
Thank you, President Flynn. Council Murphy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council Arroyo, and thank you, President Flynn. And as the Chair of Veteran Military Families and Military Affairs, I fully support this resolution in declaring August 7th as National Purple Heart Day. President Flynn already quite nicely summed up the importance of this resolution, but still to note, this day offers Americans a special opportunity to say thank you to the nearly 2 million brave men and women who fought for our nation's freedom and bear the physical scars of war. It is the ultimate sacrifice for our country, and I applaud such recipients of the Purple Heart Award, and just want to say thank you that we suspend and pass. I hope our colleagues join us in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one else, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add, Council Baker, Council Bach, Council Braidon, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Louis Jen, Council Rurrell, and please add my name. Hold on one second. Councilors Flynn and Murphy seek suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 0967. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0967 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, if you would please read in to the record, Docket 0968.
Docket number 0968, Council Murphy offer the following resolution recognizing August 7th through the 13th as National Community Health Center Week.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you to Council Arroyo. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. So August 7th through the 13th of this year marks the annual celebration of the National Community Health Center Week, honoring the extraordinary contributions our community health centers provide to every community across the nation. And here in Boston, we have 22 community health centers that serve one-third of our residents in the city, including myself and my children. So the community health centers serve as a beacon of strength, service, and care in their communities, and this National Health Center Week honors those frontline providers, staff, and beloved patients who lost their lives during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. From the very beginning of the crisis, community health centers began finding groundbreaking ways to provide preventative and primary care to their patients, and we know the incredible work they did trying to get the vaccines out, and all of the health centers did great work, but I know Manny in East Boston and the Matapan Health Center really came together and did great work trying to make sure that the residents were educated and had access to that. And each day of the National Community Health Center Week celebrates the work and services of health centers provide to the unique populations within their communities and highlights the innovative solutions they produce to address the most pressing healthcare issues that our residents face. So I hope it be resolved that the Boston City Council recognizes August 7th through the 13th as National Community Health Centers Week, which will honor our critically important healthcare centers that keep our communities healthy and thriving. So I do ask that we suspend and pass this, please. Council President Flynn, thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add, Council Arroyo, Council Baker, Council Bach, Council Braidon, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Ujain, Council Rurrell, and please add the Chair. Council Murphy seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 0968. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0964 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, we're on to personnel orders. Can you please read Docket 0969?
Docket number 0969, Council Flynn for Council Rurrell.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0969. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0970.
Docket number 0970, Council Flynn for Council Ujain.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0970. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0971.
Docket number 0971, Council Flynn for Council Baker.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0971. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0972.
Docket number 0972, Council Flynn for Council Mihia.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0972. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0973.
Docket number 0973, Council Flynn for Council Fernandez Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0973. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0974.
Docket number 0974, Council Flynn for Council Fernandez Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0974. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0975.
Docket number 0975, Council Flynn for Council Lara.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0975. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket number 0976.
Docket number 0976, Council Flynn order the following, order for appointment of temporary employees.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0976. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0977.
Docket number 0977, Council Flynn offer the following.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0977. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0978.
Docket number 0978, Council Flynn for Council Flaherty.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0978. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0979.
Docket number 0979, Council Flynn for Council Fernandez Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0979. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0975.
0980.
Okay.
Docket number 0980.
0980, yep.
0980. Council Flynn for Council Mihia.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0980. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0981.
Docket number 0981, Council Flynn for Council Rurrell.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0981. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0982.
Docket number 0982, Council Flynn for Council Rurrell.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0982. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0983.
Docket number 0983, Council Flynn for Council Fernandez Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0983. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0984.
Docket number 0984, Council Flynn for Council Mihia.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0984. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0985.
Docket number 0985, Council Flynn for Council Mihia.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0985. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. We're moving on to late files. We have four late files. One is a personnel order, and the others are...
Hearing orders and resolutions.
Hearing orders and resolutions. The late file matters should be on everyone's desk. We'll take a vote to add these into the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late file matters into the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the first late file into the record? It's the resolution, right?
The personnel order.
We'll do the personnel order first. Okay.
Personnel order filed by Council Flynn for Council Lara.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the first late file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the second late file matter?
Late file matter offered by Council Aaron Murphy, order for a hearing to discuss the strategy to prepare residents for a month-long shutdown of the MBTA. Whereas the MBTA's announcement that it will shut down the Orange Line and a portion of the Green Line for 30 days at the end of the summer forces many of our BPS students, college students, city workers, and residents to shift the way they get to school, work, and around the city. And be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing to discuss the strategy to prepare our residents for a month-long shutdown of the MBTA, including community outreach and transportation alternatives. Representatives from the MBTA, the administration, the Boston Transportation Department, Boston Public Schools, the Boston Police Department, the MBTA Transit Police Department, youth leaders, members of the public, and any other interested party shall be invited and encouraged to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. I would like to suspend Rule 12 and add Council Flaherty as an original co-sponsor, please.
Council Flaherty is added.
So as Clerk said, the MBTA's announcement that it will shut down the Orange Line and portions of our Green Line for 30 days in just a few weeks is going to force many of our BPS students, college students, hospital workers, city workers, and residents to shift the way they get to school, work, and around the city. The Orange Line will shut down from August 19th through September 18th, if they finish on time, and the Green Line will shut down from Government Center Station to the newly-opened Union Square Station from August 22nd through September 18th. According to the Boston Globe, in 2021, before ridership dipped in the wake of service cuts in the summer of 2022, the Orange Line saw 104,000 average weekday trips, the second-most among the MBTA's rail service. This shutdown will affect all residents, but especially in Charlestown, the North End, the West End, downtown, Chinatown, the South End, Jamaica Plain, and Roxbury, and anyone who works in those neighborhoods or goes to school there also. The shutdown coincides with the first day of school for Boston Public Schools and any other schools in the city, and on September 1st, and will last until the third week of school. As Boston Public School Superintendent Mary Skipper stated, "The first few days and weeks of school is where students and teachers all build up a community, build a classroom, and set the tone and climate for a successful learning year." And I do have to say, as a public school teacher for 24 years, your first couple days of school, your number-one task is to make sure all of your children got home safely. You started teaching definitely a few days in. So those first few days are very chaotic for teachers and parents and students anyway, so this is going to add more stress to the school year. Boston Public Schools are not only the concern, with two community colleges and Tufts Medical School also served by the MBTA. Thousands of students attend Roxbury Community College and Bunker Hill Community College, both of which sit on the Orange Line, and as commuter students, many require the services of the MBTA to get to school. Many city departments must coordinate together to support our residents, help the MBTA succeed, and mitigate disruption for working families, immigrant neighbors, seniors, persons with disabilities, students, and especially our communities of color. This is why, as Clerk has stated, I'm ordering a hearing in the Boston City Council to discuss the strategy and make sure we, as a council, are part of those conversations to help support this. So thank you, Council President, for allowing this late file to be heard, because I knew if we waited till the end of August, school will be starting just a couple days later, so thank you for that, to my colleagues also for hearing it late.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The Chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the maker for including me, and I would just add that I think it's important I would just add that I think it's important that we, as counselors working with the administration, we encourage and ask for our, Boston's largest employers, to really have some flexibility for the whole month, but at least particularly for that first week. We are very familiar with the sort of the work-from-home portion as a result of going through COVID. And again, just to take a little bit of strain off of that line, if it helps, and as we're trying to get our kids back to school, again, if Boston's largest employers could allow some flexibility for their employees to either work from home during that time or allow them to either come in earlier, come in later, as a way, again, to take a little bit of steam out of the kettle. So again, I know we're focused on municipal employees. We, as a government, should be considering that. We're focused on our kids, but we also have thousands and thousands of people coming into our city every day to participate in the economy, as well as to get down to an appointment. So if they could allow flexibility as private employees, we would really appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Counselora Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counselora Flaherty. Counselora, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to Counselor Murphy and Counselor Flaherty for presenting this hearing order. This closure of the MBTA is ultimately going to shut off all four neighborhoods in my district from entering into downtown Boston. We are going to be largely, not only the people that live in my district, but the people who work in my district are going to be some of the most impacted by the closure for the next month, which is why our office has been in conversation and ultimately strategizing about what a solution-based plan would look like in terms of intervention, which includes the pricing of the MBTA commuter rail going to the same level as the trains, which include making public transportation free during the closures, hours, thinking about traffic mitigation for the shuttle buses that are going to be running from Forest Hills to Oak Grove, and private and public grant opportunities for employers to ultimately be able to subsidize the cost of public transit, making all of the surrounding Blue Bike stations free, at least for the month of the closure, and so on and so forth. So we are having lots of conversation. We hope to continue having these conversations with the mayor's office as well to talk about how we mitigate the impact that this is going to have, specifically on District 6, because we are going to be one of the most impacted there. So I'm really happy that this hearing order is coming forth, and our office is more than happy to present on some of the solutions that we've been in conversation around for the next month as well.
Thank you, Counselora Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Counsel Flynn. I'll be brief, but similar to Counselora Flaherty, I've actually got the orange and the green running out to Mission Hill, and we actually have a few days this month where both the E-line and the orange line are down, which it's really tough when your redundancy also gets taken out. And I just would echo what everyone said about how much the residents in my district totally rely on the MBTA. So I've been encouraged by the announcement about the ability to use commuter rail stops and the fact that this is a public service announcement. Folks will be able to show your Charlie card. It doesn't actually need to have anything loaded on it. It's not a monthly pass. You just show your Charlie card, and you'll be able to ride those commuter rail stops in town. And also, some of the express trains will be making the local stops. So for instance, for, you know, my district, that might mean that somebody is walking down into Counselor Fernandez Anderson's district to get on at Ruggles, right? Like, but obviously, the commuter rail also doesn't stop in a lot of the places where the orange line stops today. And so just really want to underscore how important it is, I think, both for the councils to stay on the MBTA and for us and the mayor's office to keep working on, you know, all of the dedicated lanes and anything we can do to try to, like, really move people. I also want to stress that, you know, I was, you know, I'm aware that I think the current plan is to kind of shuttle folks to Back Bay Station and then have folks get on the green line. I do just want to flag that for folks who are trying to get to those intermediate downtown orange line stops, a situation where the shuttles don't run them downtown is not a great solution. Like, you're just adding a transfer to what we know is already going to be a chaotic time. So I'm looking forward to the briefings that have been arranged for us, and thanks to the president's office for that, and just definitely want us to all stay on this. So thank you to the makers, and please add my name.
Thank you, Counselor Bach, and thank you to the makers. I just wanted to highlight that we met, we had a conference call recently with the Chief of Streets on this issue. This issue was discussed. I highlighted the importance of us working together to make sure that we have a comprehensive and a plan so we're able to make sure that residents coming in from the orange line at Forest Hills, many of them, or most of them, are workers of color coming in from Forest Hills into the downtown area. There's a plan. I met last week with both the president of Bunker Hill Community College and Roxbury Community College. Both of those are on the orange line. We need to make sure we have a plan for our community college students. Chinatown is on the orange line. That will be shut down. There's a language access aspect to this outreach as well. Tufts Medical Center, as we all know, has closed their pediatric program, and that is shifting over to the Children's Hospital. So it'll be difficult for a lot of people on the orange line to try to make that transition. But for a lot of elderly in Chinatown, but for a lot of people, it's not just as simple as saying, "Well, don't get on the orange line. Just walk up to the green line, up to Boylston Street." It's not as simple as that. We have to have communication. Communication takes time and effort, and I don't think we're doing enough on this. I really don't. We have a school system that's starting in several weeks. We want to make sure every child gets to school on time. And as city counselors, we're responsible also. We have to take responsibility on that, so we have to play an engaged and active role on this, because making sure our kids get to school on time is also a critical aspect of this. And that takes effort. That takes time. And that's also language access and communication access. So I just want to say thank you to the makers. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter or add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Royal, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselora Flaherty, Counselor Louie Jean, Counselora Worell. And please add the Chair. This hearing order will be sent to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the next late hearing order?
Third late file offered by counselors Liz Braden and Kenzie Bach. Resolution condemning union busting and unfair labor practices of the Starbucks Corporation. Whereas on April 27, 2022, the Boston City Council unanimously adopted a resolution expressing support for Starbucks workers unionizing in our community and called upon Starbucks to renounce its anti-union tactics, agree to fair election principles, negotiate in good faith, and work with the unionized workers.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Clerk, for reading this. I move to suspend the rules and add President Flynn as an original cosponsor.
Seeing and hearing... Oh, go ahead.
Yes.
Seeing and hearing, no objections. He is so added.
I also want to recognize my colleague Counselor Louie Jean, who also asked to be a cosponsor, but sadly, we can only have three original cosponsors, so thank you, Counselor Louie Jean. This is a late file resolution that is following up on the resolution that we adopted as a body in April of 27, supporting Starbucks workers unionizing in our city and across the country. After their successful union election, several workers have reported unfair labor practices, including understaffing and underscheduling, restrictive policies, denial of benefits, changes in operations to unionize stores, threats of discipline or termination, and hostile work environments. At 874 Commonwealth Ave, near Boston University, workers have been on strike since July 18, and Starbucks has indicated its intention to continue operating the store with permanent replacement for striking workers. We urge the council to condemn the union busting and unfair labor practices of the Starbucks Corporation upon unionization of stores here in Boston, as well as across the country, including any use of strike breakers to cross the picket line. And I move to suspend the rules and ask for adoption of this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Counselor Braden and President Flynn and Counselor Louie Jean. And I know many colleagues have been strong supporters of these Starbucks workers on the picket line. I think that Counselora also recently provided them with some material aid. These folks, it's a funny situation. Technically, the shop itself is in Brookline, but the sidewalk and public street in front of it is in my district, and it is right very close to the line of Counselor Braden's district. So, you know, I think we feel that it's emotionally in Boston, even if it's technically in Brookline. And it's just, what Starbucks is trying to do is not okay. We have a National Labor Relations Act in this country, which in many ways, I would say, is too restrictive on union formation, but it is designed to protect workers when they collectively organize and they have a duly administered election and they form a union to then be able to negotiate with management without retaliation. And that's what we're seeing here, and it's what we're seeing across the country. And it's unacceptable, and we can't have it coming from big corporations like Starbucks. And I also want to flag, we did see this morning sort of reports of the, and I think yesterday as well, kind of Boston Police Department being on site. In this context, like I said, the street and sidewalk are the city of Boston's, and so obviously, our police department has the prerogative to be there. But I don't, but it's very important to me as a counselor, and I think to my colleagues, and I know a number of colleagues, I think, have reached out in the last few hours, that there be no way in which our police department is contributing to any campaign of intimidation by the corporation here. I'm a big believer in picket lines and honoring them and not crossing them. And I think it's been amazing how our community, both the labor community and just the local community in general, has come together to support these workers on their picket line over the past almost month. And we intend to continue to do so, and I just think that this mega corporation needs to take a very strong message from the city of Boston that the tactics it's using will not be accepted here. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. Counsel President Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Counsel Royal, and just want to thank my colleagues for including me, but also to thank my colleagues for always being there, for supporting the rights of working men and women across Massachusetts. This city council plays a key role in supporting workers, and we've been there on almost every issue impacting working families. So I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for their incredible work during these difficult periods of time, and including Mayor Wu's team as well. I did have a, just for the record, I did have an opportunity to talk to the Boston police this morning, but I do know that every time I've been on a strike line, the Boston police have always been very professional, have always supported the workers, have always communicated effectively as well with the workers on strike. So I just wanted to highlight that issue. Thank you, Counsel Royal.
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn. The Chair recognizes Counselora Flaherty.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to show my support for this resolution. Starbucks, in recent days, has escalated their union busting tactics by showing up to the 874 Commonwealth Ave location and basically removing all of the furniture that all of the strikers were using to kind of sit on. And so like Counselor Bach referenced, my office brought down, you know, a dozen folding chairs for them to sit on. What Starbucks is doing is very, very much intimidation. They're trying to bust a union. They're trying to break the picket line. I really appreciate the use of strike breakers instead of scabs here on this thing. But they're bringing in people to try to clean up the store. They're trying to open it up again, and they're crossing the picket line. And we always say that Boston is a union town, and so we need to stand in solidarity with the workers when they're trying to unionize and when they're exercising their rights as workers. My hope is that, you know, we continue to be supportive to the Starbucks workers. We think that this escalation is going to continue, and they think that they're going to show up, you know, in the wee hours of the morning to try to continue to get the store ready to open. And so myself and some of my staff folks are signing up to do some overnight shifts on the strike line. I know that Counselor Braden and other folks have already joined in. So I wanted to, you know, make a public call to continue to make sure that we're strengthening the line and that we're holding the line with the workers at the 874 Commonwealth Ave location, and that we're supporting them not only with this resolution, but with the material support that they need to be able to not only stay on strike, but get the win that the union deserves right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselora Flaherty. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Baker, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselora Flaherty, Counselor Louie Jean, Counselor Murphy, Counselora Worell, and please add my name. Counselors Braden, Bach, and Flynn seek suspension of the rules and adoption of the first late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been adopted.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. Mr. Clerk, please read the next late file matter.
The third late file matter offered by, oh, the fourth, sorry, fourth late file matter offered by Counsel Michael Flaherty. Resolution in support of House 2769, an act relative to the retirement benefits of the surviving beneficiary of Robert Lawler. Whereas Robert Lawler served our city as a Boston police officer for over 34 years until a work-related injury forced his retirement in August 2006. And therefore be it resolved that the city council expresses support and urges passage of House 2769, an act relative to the retirement benefits of the surviving beneficiary of Robert Lawler.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselora Flaherty. Counselora Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. President. Apologize for the late file. This late file resolution is supporting House Bill 2769, which was filed by State Representative Jeffrey Roy out of Franklin. The bill seeks to remedy an unfortunate bureaucratic situation that resulted in the denial of retirement benefits being paid to a Boston police officer's widow. Robert Lawler grew up in Rosendale, served our city for 34 years in his capacity as a Boston police officer, also served our country as a Vietnam veteran, and he died in 2020 from cancer that is believed to have come from his exposure to toxic chemicals over in Vietnam, leaving behind his wife of 48 years, as well as family members. And despite being listed as a beneficiary on all of his other forms and insurance inquiries, there's no documentation of a final option selection for Option C upon Mr. Lawler's retirement date. And as a result of that, the PERC and Boston Retirement Board have denied Option C payments and are paying under Option B, and those are the allotments under the Option B statute. In what appears to be a bureaucratic or clerical mishap, it's had real consequences for Mrs. Lawler and her ability to sustain herself. Our job as counselors is to help constituents navigate bureaucracy and to act six city services, as well as the benefits that they're entitled to. And I'm urging my colleagues to sign on to this resolution that is up at Beacon Hill for their new session. It's a special act, so it's happening on its own. They felt that sort of a good housekeeping sample of approval from the city's legislative branch of city government, recognizing his service as a Boston police officer, his service to our country as a Vietnam veteran, but also recognizing that in all of his other forms and particularly his insurance, identifying his intent was to list his spouse of 48 years, who literally was by his side up until his death. That was his intention. Unfortunately, that documentation was not included in the packet where all the other information was. So they're asking us to just signal by way of a resolution that we support docket, House Bill 2769, urging for passage, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter or add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counsel Royal, Counsel Baker, Counsel Bach, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, Counselora Flaherty, Counselor Louie Jean, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Worell, and please add the Chair. Counsel Flaherty is seeking suspension and adoption of this late file matter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The late file matter has been adopted. Okay. We're now moving on to consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are two additions to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We're going into the green sheets now. Counsel Flaherty, you are recognized.
Thank you. Before the green sheet, just moving for consideration on docket 0921 as Chair of Public Safety and have also consulted with the Chair of Government Operations and have worked with the administration and preliminarily with stakeholders, just asking for reconsideration on assignment on docket 0921. Thank you, Ms. President.
So Counsel Flaherty, you're asking that 0921 be placed in your committee?
That's the ask through the Chair. Obviously, your decision. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Mr. Clerk, please...
Mr. Clerk, please reassign docket 0921 to Public Safety Committee. Green sheets? We're onto green sheets. Would anyone like to take something out of the green sheet? The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise, pull a matter from the green sheets and invoke Rule 24. The matter I wish to remove is docket 0265 from page one of the green sheets. Docket 0265 was referred to committee on February 9th, 2022, 182 days ago. Under Rule 24, if after 120 days a matter is referred to a committee unless referred to, it may be called out by five members of the council. So I'm looking to pull out this docket, and I need five members of this body to agree.
Is it 0265?
0265.
COVID-19.
Mr. Clerk, you'd read it into the record. The clerk is going to read it into the record. That's docket, that's 0265.
Docket number 20265 in the committee on Boston's COVID-19 recovery, in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand a grant funded through the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund, CLFRF, in the Treasury of the United States, established by Section 9901 of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA, awarded by the United States Department of the Treasury.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm going to allow Counsel Baker to continue. Is there a question, Counsel Bach?
Mr. President, I have a point.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This docket is in my committee, COVID Recovery. It's the docket concerning $10 million for the Dorchester Field House. Because Counsel Baker and I have had prior conversation about it, I know that the sponsor would have liked if I had moved this for a vote from my committee. The reason that I didn't, over the last few months, separate from our whole overall conversation about ARPA, is that the docket as filed is an appropriation order filed by a counselor, which is not allowed by the Charter of the city. So we had entertained it for a hearing, but it's my view that it cannot, by the rules of the city charter, be moved for actual action because it did not originate with the mayor, and all appropriation orders have to originate with the mayor. So I guess, Mr. President, and this is a question through you to the clerk, is, you know, I want to raise that point of order, it's a real substantive rules objection. I respect the fact that Counsel Baker, I think, wants to get support for this matter on the record. And it's immaterial to me whether the clerk's judgment is that that point of order makes it impossible to pull it out of committee as is being proposed, or just makes it impossible for a vote of the council to actually carry it. But I do think, you know, in truly proper rules order, we probably should never have allowed it to come into council because it's an appropriation order filed by a counselor. We certainly can't pass it as a body as an appropriation order because it's not been filed by the necessary. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. We're going to take a brief recess. I'm going to talk to the city clerk and legal counsel. We're in brief recess. We're back in session. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and to our city council and central staff for your guidance. Mr. Clerk, so it's my understanding we need five members of the city council to pull this out of the green sheet since this is a, it's been in the committee for more than 120 days, which would be Rule 24. So can we please call the roll to see if we're able to take it out of the green sheets, Mr. Clerk?
Roll call on docket number 0265. Counsel Royal.
No.
Counsel Royal, no. Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach?
No.
Counsel Bach, no. Counsel Braden?
No.
Counsel Braden, no. Counsel Coletta?
No.
Counsel Coletta, no. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counselora?
Yes.
Counselora, yes. Counsel Louie Jen?
No.
Counsel Louie Jen, no. Counsel Mihia?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Worrell?
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 0265 is properly before the body with receiving 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 votes in the affirmative.
So now, Mr. Clerk, I'm going to ask Counsel Baker to speak, and then at the appropriate time, we will vote on it. So at this time, the Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I don't really want to fight about this, you know what I'm saying? I really don't. I think that this should just happen. What? Yeah, yeah, I do. You're right, I do. I wish it was a fistfight, though, you know, that'd be better for me. Anyways, I would like to offer amendment.
Let me just remind all of my colleagues, when someone is speaking, not to interrupt anyone. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to offer one amendment so there's consistency in the money that's available and the money that we're asking for. The original docket, the original docket 0265 was for $10 million. There is actually $5 million. The way I see it, there's $5 million there available, so I would like to amend that number from $10 million to $5 million so it was in alignment with what's available. And just a separate point, just today, I mean, some people have an issue where it's coming from housing money. Just today, docket 926, I believe, we're going to have a hearing on another, an additional $16.5 million for housing. So the housing dollars through op are going to continue to come in, and also we talked about grants, going to be more housing money coming in. The only time to build this real infrastructure is now. So, yes, I do want to fight, and it's well worth me fighting for it. So the amendment is on the floor. I think we need to vote on the amendment.
Okay, so Counsel Baker offered an amendment that needs to be seconded by someone. There's a second by Counsel Murphy. So that amendment would be from $10 million to $5 million for the field house. So do we have any further discussion on this? At this time, the Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. And through the Chair to Counsel Baker, could you clarify, is it true that if we do pass this, that the state and the federal have money to match for us, but if we don't pass it here at the council, that money will not go through?
The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
The state has already committed at least $5 million the day after we took our vote. It was an eight to five when the state, in their budget, committed $5 million to this project now. So the state allowed us to not necessarily be a match from the city. They looked at the money that was already raised as that match, so they allowed that to move forward. As far as the feds, there's no, we're just going after federal money. There's no talk of it needs to be a match. So we've got the state on board with this project, we have feds on board with this project. I'm trying to get the city of Boston on board with this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. I have been informed by legal counsel that since there is an amendment, that we do need to have something written at this time. So I'm going to take a brief recess so we're able to get the necessary paperwork that can be added to the agenda. We're in brief recess.